I'd like to call to order the August 12th meeting of the Campbell County School Board. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I look forward to a productive meeting. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first thing on the agenda is Dr. Patello, the president of the V S B A. And I learned a little something about him just in the last hour. He's a preacher, but he's promised not to praise to us tonight, but he's got a lot of roots in Lynchburg and I hope you'll share all of that background with us when you speak to us if you would please.
Yes, sir.
Floor's all yours. No time limit. The floor is yours.
You said it to a preacher, the floor is mine?
Let me ask this question, did you eat before you came?
No, thank you again for these few moments, but I promise I will have you home in time for the 11 o'clock news. But no, I have spent quite a bit of time in Lynchburg, attended Liberty University for undergraduate work and my master's degree and also at the Virginia University of Lynchburg for my doctorate degree. So I love this area. This is my first time actually stopping and spending some time in Campbell, so I'm excited about that. And thank you all for having me. But to you Chairman Jones and the Campbell County City School Board and Dr. Stanley, good evening. I'm honored to stand before you as president of the Virginia School Board Association and a fellow board member from the city of Portsmouth. On behalf of the entire V S B A Board of Directors, I bring you warm greetings. I want to express our deep appreciation for your dedication to the education and well-being of the children here in Campbell County and the broader Commonwealth of Virginia. As a school board member, I know sometimes your tireless efforts do not go unnoticed and your commitment to fostering and nurturing an educational environment is truly commendable. Today actually marks my 15th stop on my president's road show around the Commonwealth and I couldn't be more pleased to continue my journey here with you. Your role as advocates for the children in your community is both vital and challenging and I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the countless hours you dedicate to shaping the future of our youth. Now I understand the responsibilities of being a school board member can at times seem tiring and thankless. However, please know that your efforts are making a significant impact on the lives of the students you serve. Your commitment to education is building the foundation for a brighter future for the children in Campbell County and the entire Commonwealth. Once again, thank you for your unwavering dedication. I look forward to continuing our work together to ensure a brighter future for Virginia students. Thank you. If you have any questions, I entertain them at this time.
What drove you to be on the school board?
Well, I was a youth pastor full-time for about nine years. So I spent a lot of my time in the school division locally as a mentor, advocating for children as another option outside of suspension and things of that sort. So the community actually approached me about running for the school board. I love children and I dedicated my entire life to working with children. So once I left being a full-time youth pastor, I started an organization called Mile High Kids and I now have the Head Start Grant for all of Virginia Beach and all of East Virginia, including Tapahannock, Lancaster, all that area. So I'm still working with children every day, serving on the school board. There's nothing else I'd rather be doing than fulfilling. I taught school for about five years, fifth grade and kindergarten. So fresh out of college, so that's been my story. I love children.
That's great. That's great. What's your favorite thing about Lynchburg?
Definitely the scenery outside of the cheesy western from the Texas end. Which I will be going late night, early morning, they're always open, ready for me. So that's one of my favorite things about Lynchburg.
Good answer.
You live there more in Richmond now, don't you?
You shouldn't have told me that. That's only an hour and a half from home. Oh wow. Yeah, but I love it here. I love the area. I love the scenery, so I'm just thankful you all had me come.
How long ago were you at Liberty? When were you at Liberty?
That was in 2000, 2004 was when I left there for the last time, 2004. Yep. Built up a lot since then. But yeah, that was the last time I was there for sure.
Well, we appreciate you coming and spending your time with us.
Well, just a quick question. Anything new into V S B A that we should know or any bumps in the road that we should know about?
No bumps in the road I can think of, but we have just opened our legislative advocacy process. So this is the perfect time if you all have legislative needs that you would like V S B A to advocate for, to submit that package so we can do that for you and get that on our docket. Many times, even my own school board at home, we've never submitted a packet and this would be our first year doing so. But a lot of the legislative priorities that many of our divisions have, they can fund us for from Richmond. So for instance, we did submit one item last year for our career technical education program and we did receive money in the budget for that, about $2 million this year to go towards that program. So we never would have gotten if we wouldn't have put the request in. So I do ask you to please do that, approach your legislators, also submit to V S B A so you can get the needs methods you need for your area. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you in Williamsburg.
Absolutely. Diversion through court services presentation, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening Chairman Jones, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I think our presentation will show up in just a second. If not, I'll just go from memory. So what we're talking about tonight is just an administrative response to drugs in school. The prevalence of drugs in our community has become more and so inevitably those things come into our school buildings. And when I went around kind of talked to high school and secondary administrators, those things are not going unseen, right? So as we continue to work on what that looks like, and if we'll just go to the first slide, nationally where we're starting to see an increase is in our younger students. So eighth graders, 61% growth in our eighth grade population of use across the country from 2016 to 2020 and some of that used in data. And 50% of teenagers across the country say they misuse some type of drug at least once. Here in Virginia, most recent data from the National Center for Drug Abuse says that 44,000, about 7% of 12 to 17-year-olds report using a drug in the last month and among them, the most prevalent is marijuana. 77% of students saying they use marijuana in the last month from that 7%. And overall, about 10% of students 12 to 17 say they used marijuana sometime in the last year. And I think we see this as it becomes more prevalent in our community and at homes, it's easier accessed, so students are the ones that have to make those decisions. So what we're trying to do, or what we have done, is continue to build on the partnership that we have with the Sheriff's Department and our court services here in Campbell County. A lot of good work was done already, some incorporating the Botman curriculum that Ms. Tanner has been kind of doing in our schools to get the education component, because education's always first line of defense, right? If we can make people aware and informed, hopefully they make good decisions. But there's other ways to educate and other ways people learn lessons if the first doesn't work. So as we look at that response and our partnership, the school response will be very similar, right? If there are students who have a controlled substance or marijuana on school property at a school event, school administrators recommend those folks have a 10-day out-of-school suspension with a recommendation for expulsion per the Code of Virginia. They go to a discipline hearing. They will meet with me as a discipline hearing officer and we'll look at what is an appropriate consequence for those students based on the level of the offense. And through that, some other good work that was done already is our Substance Abuse Program here through the Cornerstone Learning Center. And so those options will still be available. Where we tried to extend and kind of move forward is with our Sheriff's Department response, we always notified SROs, but now they'll have an active role. They'll actually meet with families after the school discipline has been administered at the school level, talk about the formal legal process for initiating the juvenile intake. And so they will call CSU, call juvenile probation officers, file paperwork there and they'll gather evidence for possession charges with criminal court services. So they'll have to sit down and meet with their SROs and talk about the legal process that follows for possession. On the end of that, our court services unit, our juvenile probation officers will do that intake and meet with families and inform them what the process can look like. And a lot of first-time offenders will be candidates for pre-child diversion program. In the pre-child diversion program, we get to some details in just a second, but this will only apply for first-time offenders. Anything that's a criminal level offense, a felony level offense, or a repeat offender, those things will be prosecuted through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. But for most of us, that first-time offense would just go to a pre-child diversion program. We'll go to the next slide. And pre-child diversion programs are basically an alternative to the traditional criminal prosecution. So it's a chance for students to avoid those penalties of court and avoid having a criminal record, right? It effectively will put them on a plan or a contract with the juvenile probation officer to make sure they adhere to the things they need to do moving forward. Like I said, first-time offenders and nonviolent offenders are candidates for all pre-child diversion programs. And they'll meet with juvenile intake and if they meet the requirements that are laid out through the diversion process, those charges can be dismissed and they avoid having a criminal record. The big thing here for us is it gives us another layer of intervention for students where this can be something through juvenile probation, they're become supervised probation for up to 120 days. So whereas our school-based consequences right now, we've gotten to where we're trying to shorten the time out of school because of how detrimental it is to the academic component, this provides a level of accountability that's outside of school and can help for an extended period of time, make sure we don't have that recidivism rate and that students can get the help and support they need. So really, the big benefits of a diversion-type program, it's a quick response to an offense. There's no waiting for a trial date, there's no open court, they meet very quickly with a juvenile intake officer, so it holds offenders legally responsible for their conduct. But you know, in my experience and having conversations, one of the bigger things is support for families. I know when we talk about court involvement, often people think of the consequence base, but there is also the component that it is there to help support and get that intervention if parents find themselves in those scenarios where they're not in control, right? And so this is another way that we think some of these partnerships in our county can help support families and reduce the likelihood of repeat offenses. And if they do fulfill their requirements through the diversion process in that, over that period of time, you know, those things go away. Those charges are dismissed and they move on. Doesn't impact job prospects, student loans, or other kind of life aspects that are further down the road. So this would be a good way for that lesson learned with not necessarily having the long-term consequences of court involvement. I'll take any questions you all may have about the process or what that might look like.
So vaping with THC, which, is that in the same category as marijuana?
Yes, sir.
So the same consequences for vaping with THC?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm a little confused because, so personal, I'm not talking about minors, but in general, personal use of marijuana is usually not charged as a felony anymore, right?
It's not a felony, no sir. It's a civil penalty for people that are of age, but people that are underage is still a misdemeanor and can be a chargeable offense.
So that's where the legal aspect is a misdemeanor?
Yes, yes, sir.
For the child?
Yes.
And the parents are accountable or not accountable?
The parents are going to be accountable in the process for the diversion process because part of that agreement is going to be parents agreeing to provide their students or take their students to whatever is deemed appropriate by the juvenile probation officer or that intake officer. So if there are drug screenings, if there is counseling, if there are other aspects that they deem appropriate to meet the needs of that student, parents will have to facilitate that.
And then if it's possession with enough to distribute or they are distributing, then that bumps it up to a felony or is it still a misdemeanor?
Potentially, right? It just depends on what levels and I'm not a legal attorney, I won't get into which, where that line is crossed and what turns it into, you know, a different level of misdemeanor or felony, but that will kind of defer to our SROs and our juvenile intake officers to see what they have and kind of pursue it accordingly.
Well, while we're working on prevention as much as we can and making sure we're being out ahead of the game and being proactive, this just gives us one more layer of consequence on the back end to say, hey, if you're going to use these products with THC, we're going to charge you. And we're taking it very seriously. To go along with our Substance Abuse Program, we think that the two together can be a real deterrent. And then obviously if somebody's distributing, that's a different conversation. That's not a Substance Abuse Program, that's an expulsion, so.
And Brian, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask about it, but I'm glad we're, I almost forgot all about it, was the testing itself. So do we have a need for more testing from our school administration or do the SROs do the testing and need more testing? I've just heard that we don't have enough testing. That's kind of...
We met with court services unit and all the SROs a couple of weeks ago at Rustberg High School and I don't think testing is going to be something that we will have to worry about as far as test kits and availability. That's something they're going to be able to figure out.
Okay. So, but will our administrators do that or will the SROs do that?
No, the SROs will gather all the evidence they need. So that chain of evidence will be something that's handled by law unfortunately.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Captain Bryant, I want to thank the Sheriff's Office and Court Services for your support with this. I feel like it's pretty important. Thank you.
So what's changed the most? Has the court services gotten more involved or we're pushing? Mrs. Parker was sharing with me a little bit that, you know, it seemed like our hands were tied before that we couldn't do some of this stuff. So what's changed?
I think, you know, we just got together, had a conversation about how we could help each other and when it's kind of been prompted by some of the continued educational efforts that are being made and just sitting in a room and talking with people about what are avenues that we could explore because the need was presented by the school administration and kind of heard in the community. And so this is one of the avenues that was presented and it's been done in other kind of jurisdictions around us. And so it's something that we think could work and be very helpful, so.
All right. So the only thing I would ask is maybe around Christmas, an update on how it's doing?
Yes, sir.
You know, are the court services following up? Are they doing their job? You know, I'd like a follow-up after we've been using it for a while.
Yes, sir. Will do.
And I don't think this is really Brian, but kind of in collaboration, but does Karen want to say anything about Botman like the other, the kid, the other board members might not know about yet?
And I only know a little bit about it.
I mean, if you want to present that later on or if that's something, I mean, I don't want to take away Amy's later flame of Sharon.
Sure. I have it on stage tonight, but what it is, is and then of course...
Actually, I have it with me. If anybody wants to see it.
The Botman curriculum is a well-researched program that is about education. We know that your most questionable students are young folks, especially in homeschool. Who knows that statistic? It was 12. And so we feel the need to really look at our educational programs. And so again, kudos to Captain Bryant and the Sheriff's Office because it's going to be a joint partnership. This is due to our family consumer agent with the Virginia Cooperative Extension that we are able to have these materials and it will be presented in health and PE, health classes from grades six and up through that. So that is that with ninth grade is kind of the last year, 10th grade they have driver's ed, so they're kind of full. And they will be working with them and the teachers have mostly finished the training at this point. They have their curriculum materials and they will be implementing that this year. On Friday, the teachers worked on their casing because they've got to figure out, okay, where are we putting this in? And again, they will be continuing to partner with the Sheriff's Office and we also met with the school resource officers almost two weeks ago to talk through that.
So it's fully funded with a COPE grant, so it is a fully funded program. We just happen to fall in a county that can benefit from that. And so it's a, you know, it's an adopted curriculum from B D O E. It's really, think of like the old DARE programs with much more intense as far as conflict resolution is part of it too. So it's not just the drugs, but it really gives us the opportunity to create that relationship between our SOR officers and our, it's kind of stemmed from, I was having lunch with Sheriff Clark and I don't even know how it even started, probably from our drug workshops that we were doing. And he's like, I wish we had the DARE program and a light flicked and I'm like, wait a minute. Campbell County's one of them that we can get these resources. And so it was trying not to add something additional to our teachers, but try to build that relationship and so it's kind of where this all started. But I've got a copy, by luck I didn't happen to plan to bring it with me, it's just still in my bag, so if anybody wants to see it, it's here.
And it aligns with our standards and additionally, it is focused on like healthy concept of self and relationships with peers. In addition, we were able to get funding for stipends for the teachers for their training since it was not during contract hours. And so we're excited. We'll also keep you posted, maybe in December can add that and let you know how the first semester has gone.
Cool.
Just, are vape detectors working well and do we think they're working well?
Very well.
Too well.
Okay, good. That's a good answer, okay. There's more smoking in the boys' room, right?
May I ask a question?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Ranella.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Stanley, members of the board. I'm here this evening to provide you with a safety and security update as well as a debrief from the July 11, 12, I Love You Guys Foundation training that we had over at Rustberg High School. I'll start off with, we recently concluded in July, June, July, the 23, 24 cycle of upgrades from our security equipment grant. And I would like to thank Ms. McClanahan and Angela Prince for her help. They helped me a lot behind the scenes with the numbers and calculations with that, so thank you for their continued guidance. The division had a total of $259,861 awarded to that. Of that, $51,900 was a local match. Add to that total sum, and I'll, I can get into some more details, but obviously I'm going to be a little bit reserved in what I say because of the sensitive nature of the things that we've purchased and some of the upgrades. But what I feel comfortable in sharing, that $42,000 of that was allocated for an upgrade to the radio systems that we have across the division to where now that we have digital channels and we also have secured lines to where we did not have that before. So if there is an emergency in the school, we can go to a secure line, we can speak directly to that principal, police, emergency services can go directly to where the other channels that we have, they're public access. If you've got a radio at home, you can hear what's going on. So we have a scrambled channel to help us in that situation. So that was a total of $42,000 in addition to upgrades, handheld upgrades as well. We, close to $37,000 was, we used for implementing AEDs into our schools, so additional AEDs were purchased and distributed and installed in our schools. Close to $100,000, I also work very closely with Mr. Hudson in the back, Mark Hudson and his team in technology, because a lot of these things overlap, different programs and processes do overlap between technology, maintenance and Brad Fisher, et cetera. But we purchased nearly $100,000 in switches. And basically what that is, is the infrastructure for all the technology systems that you have. You've got cameras, you've got vape detectors, you've got access control panels, all of that has to run on some sort of a highway and we keep adding things to the highway. So we needed to help with that infrastructure. So that was $100,000 into there. We also have additional funds that were allocated for cameras, hard drives, security for hard drives, more volume, more data that we can save so we can go back a couple of months now and look at data on our cameras. So a lot of the stuff behind the scenes that really helps us keep us up and running is what was spent this year. That being said, what we will do moving forward now is we audit the safety of all of our buildings and all the programs that we have this time of the year and we do that throughout the year. Then we reapply for the next grant cycle, which we are in now. We'll get awards and notifications of that sometime in the fall, then we repeat the process. But also in addition to that, we have been very fortunate to receive additional funding from the federal level on some things that, solely for security equipment, that we'll also be looking at using just for their purposes and we'll have to audit. We have some ideas of what we would like to spend that on and finish up some projects, so we're pretty excited about that. So that's giving you just an overview of what we've done with that grant and the purchases and the implementation of that. We actually have a company that showed up this morning and they're doing, I'm excited about a specific upgrade to some of our schools right now and hopefully we're going to continue to contract with them in the upcoming years because it's, a lot of these things are, you put them in incrementally and in phases like at cameras. We didn't have all the cameras that we do now. We had 10 cameras at one time and then we added five more and five more, so, because the price tags on some of these things are astronomical, 1.2, 2.4 million dollars to do an entire division. So we'll get there and I'm confident that we'll get there in the direction that we're going in. I would also be remiss if I did not thank Captain Bryant and Lieutenant Mayberry as well, because all of this is a collaborative effort and if I don't have good people around me, like I've mentioned before, this work does not get done. Speaking of work getting done, we did some work on the July 11th and 12th and we contracted with the I Love You Guy, I Love You Guys Foundation. And it was a division-wide and county-wide crisis reunification exercise that we contracted with the foundation. The attendees that were there, that participated for the two days, we had 47 Campbell County employees, that's school employees, 12 of the SROs were there, the ones that were not there were in training. Captain Bryant had four of his senior staff there, dispatch had four on comms, Virginia State Police EMS was six, and we also had Ms. Tanner and Ms. Parker there as well. So appreciate your participation. The goal of that day was for us to reinforce our understanding of the standard reunification methods and then to actually go through a couple of practical applications of the reunification exercise, which we did. We did three versions of that, if you would, three sessions of the reunification exercise over the two days. What we will do moving forward with that, with that training, the standard reunification, excuse me, the standard response protocol has been in place in our building for several years. So we continue to use that methodology, if you would. When it comes to the reunification exercise part that we drilled on this summer and we had the exercise on, what we will get to, where we will get to as a division is in the spring semester for allowing those that participated, which we had full participation, to do one of those drills inside of their schools, scaled down like we did. We were not going to do it with children and full staff, but for them to be able to go through, to identify those key players on those teams that they would have to have execute certain functions and tasks and responsibilities. And if they do get into a place where you could have some parents volunteer and the kids do that, hey, all the better. So that will be our next move when it comes to, how do we carry that training forward and what does that look like moving forward? Again, the standard response protocol is in place. We've done that for several years now, so it'll be more of then getting into what does the reunification exercise look like and all the different complexities of that. Where are we going to reunify? Who are we going to partner with, et cetera, et cetera? And a lot of the people that I've mentioned already are people that I'll be working with to get that work done across the division and across the county. So, that being said, I'm open for any sort of questions, whether it's on the grant process and what things have been purchased, where that's going, the training that we had with the I Love You Guys or if you want to talk about transportation, we could talk about transportation too.
Tomorrow's a big day.
Tomorrow's a big day.
Dr. Ranella?
Yes, sir.
As far as the grants go, I guess, part of that, and you mentioned cameras, but I happened to see on the news today actually about Appomattox and the Zero Eye camera, I think, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a camera detector in the school that can detect movement of a firearm in the school and radio, send out a radio signal to, you know, controlled radios and alert where that may be inside the school. Is that something Campbell County might be looking into?
To some degree, I think the, using smart cameras, if you would, we've started to explore that, where you can identify specific vehicles or who was wearing a red shirt in your hallway this afternoon and they look and they go, oh, it was Scott and James were wearing red shirts. And they look and they go, oh, it was Scott and James were wearing red shirts. But there's, obviously there's a price tag to that. And if we did that as a division, probably would want to test that out a little bit on a small scale basis. But I have started to look into that to see what advantages we would have with that. Some of the principals were interested in that, uh, because it makes a little bit of the, um, not specifically what you were addressing, but what I have looked at, they would be interested, uh, because it helps them do the research and go, because you're looking through a lot of film and a lot of data to find out a something or a somebody. So, um, yeah, it's, it's continually evolving. There's, yeah, more than, more than, more than you would imagine as much as to keep up with.
Is this grant strictly for IT stuff or is it for?
No, not necessarily.
I mean fences and storefronts?
Correct.
I'm asking.
It's about 20, it's about 20 buckets that you could get into, uh, cameras, uh, fences, uh, radios. So there's, it's, it's no, it's not all IT based. Mm-mm. Yes, sir.
I mean, our area, we had, as always before, made recommendations. They all involve fences and storefronts.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something future we will be looking into?
Is, in terms of fences and storefronts?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. The challenge with the storefront is finding someone to do the storefront. Uh, so we have tried to contact with several agencies and people come out and give quotes and then those things kind of dissolve. Talk about vestibules. We had a company do a quote here for this building, uh, when we had the career day. Uh, and then we also were looking for doing that to William Campbell as well, because those were two priority areas. Uh, so it's a, it's really a matter of trying to get some contractor in here to do that. Uh, as a matter of fact, I know an adjacent county, uh, signed up and I think they're putting in 12 different vestibules. And I think maybe nine of them are not complete right now and they've already started school. So it just gives you an idea that's a adjacent county. Try to get someone to come in and do these vestibules.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So all the technology upgrades that you were referring to, um, how are we doing good training and, um, because there's got to be a lot of training that goes along with that.
Uh, to be honest with you, your training were appropriate, but some of these things, not necessarily. No.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, it's, to be honestly, it's, it's, it's folks, um, from Mark's team that go and they do the installs and the wiring and the hardware of it is, as long as they trained and know how to install it and get it all hooked up, the, the front end, the user end doesn't, it's minimal.
It is, okay.
Yeah, yes, sir. It's minimal. It's not as, it's not a, it's not a big curve.
Okay.
No, sir. Mm-mm. I appreciate you asking that though, because that, that can be a doozy.
Especially when you need it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
And then you said you had 47 participants from the school system.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we're, we're looking at using this information in a crisis situation. God forbid. Is 47 enough? I mean, and you have in-school training also to reinforce this. But again, it has to become muscle memory, not just, and, and are we working on that? I guess.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And we've done this training before as a division. All of the, right? Yeah, all of the senior staff has done this. So the training that we went through, it was intentionally to bring the site-based administrators along to, to do that. So our central off, office did that, um, pre-COVID, right before COVID. We went over there, I believe over at Highland Heights was the reunification center. So all of Dr. Stanley's team, central office team, we went over there and basically did what we did over the past those two days in July. So it was more to make sure that they had an understanding of what that looks like so they could actually do that in their building. We can do that in our building for, as a division, but it was more intended to they understand what they're going to have to go through and what they have to bring to the table.
Yeah, so it wasn't open for all the teachers to come to. It was principal, vice principals.
Uh, oh, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
Yeah.
So it wasn't lack of attendance. It was just focus on the main.
Yeah, it was very, very well attended.
They were comfortable to, to turn around and do it with their own buildings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood.
It was an extension of our leadership conference.
Okay.
So we had one day with administrators, then two days of training. Yes.
And a major benefit of the training is you do it multiple times. So then you can replicate it and you get more, I don't want to say efficient. That's not the right word, but you, you tweak it each time. So it was great practice for everyone. And then got the principals to have some good thoughts about, okay, how do you think about this?
Yeah.
Or this or that.
I think that was the key, was the conversations with, and knowing that every school is unique and every situation is different. And so that was going to bring, you know, different pros and cons. You know, God forbid that was something that we had to face. But the converse, the opportunity for the conversations and then seeing how the second and third time we improved with what we did. I, I think that was significant. Yeah. And significantly improved. We got a lot, you know, I feel, as a parent, I feel very confident that, you know, we're, we're in line. You know, of course, the buildings need to be trained, but, you know, when it burst, you know, you did have a heartburn until it, we actually put it into, into practice. But we've got a strong.
And it, and it was good because they, they did it. It's just the confidence, your muscle memory comment is what made me think of that. They, they did it and they did it over and over and over again. It's like, okay, this is not too bad. Could pull this off. And it, and it is, and it's just the volume and the distress of the moment when you have to do it is what it is.
Yeah, and since you didn't, um, get to hear us talk about it the last time, Scott, the thing that I enjoyed the most was we switched roles. So we did it three times. So you were either an administrator or you were a student or you were a parent. So then it gave all the perspectives of what it's like to wait in line and is your kid okay? And what it's like to be the last kid in the room before the parents come and pick you up, worried about where your parent is. And just thinking about all of the different things you could do to help keep those people busy so they don't get anxious. You know, it was great. I'm telling you, it was absolutely great.
Yeah, thank you very much. As far as, I'll just speak to transportation because I know it'll come up. Uh, as far as transportation is concerned, uh, we're still seven drivers short. That's part-time and full-time. Uh, that's a lot better when I first started, uh, this position, which we were at 20 for two years ago, and then we kind of whittled it down. Uh, seven, the, which is fantastic, however, comma. One of the things that, uh, we've recognized over the past week is, uh, our ridership is going through the roof. We've added, um, close to 300 riders of the bus. That is not enrollment. It's not like new to the division. They just were not taking a bus last year. And this year they're taking a bus. That's widespread. That's across the division. And that's two years in roll. Last year it wasn't as much. I think we probably had about 150. But over the past two years, I would be safe to say we're probably pushing 400 additional students that are taking Campbell County public transportation. So that certainly has an impact on my numbers and what that looks like. Sir?
Did you just finish the CDO class?
Uh, pretty much.
Best month or so?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we just finished up. Um, yes. And we have a, a gentleman from down in Alta Vista Way, should probably be any day now going to DMV and getting locked in. I'm excited about that. That was a very good pickup from Alta Vista.
So my memory from the last meeting and my memory is not very good, but I, I thought we were seven short at the last meeting and you were training three that would be ready to roll and start a school, which would leave four. Is that still close to?
We have more reservations.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Uh, that's terrible, but.
But they're doing well. It's, 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 it's going in the right direction. So volume is the volume. You can't really do much about that.
So the security grants are great. Are we still pursuing more grants? I mean, I mean, do we have people that are seeking them and applying for them on a regular basis? I mean.
We do.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I, I, whether it's Mr. Hudson, Ms. McClanahan, I get forwarded all sorts of information and, and, and explore. Dr. Stanley, I forwarded something to Captain Bryant the other day. So we, we all kind of check into what would be the right thing for us to pursue and to not pursue. So yes, there's.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, no matters on the floor. So we'll go to the approval of the July 22nd meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I had a motion from Mr. Phillips and a second from Ms. Tanner. Somebody else on that end down there?
Yes, me, it's okay. David can have it.
Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Tanner. Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the bills for the month and moved to pay them.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller and second by Mr. Maddox that we pay the bills. Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Donations, Michelle.
Tonight you have three donations for approval. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we approve the donations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of supplemental appropriations, Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have two appropriations for approval listed on board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve these.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Mrs. Tanner, that we approve the request for supplemental appropriations. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-resident tuition, Ms. McClanahan.
We have a list of non-resident students for approval. Unless you have any questions on those, I'd ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Maddox, that we approve the non-resident tuition requests. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Uh, just a quick question. Are we, I just have troubles interpreting, how many new ones do we have? I know there's some new ones, but did we get a lot applying this year? Or it's pretty much just in the line?
It's about the same.
Okay, all right.
Michelle, I like the way they're alphabetical. Much easier to look and see. Thank you for that.
Any more questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Dr. Hale, policy revisions, first and second and third and fourth?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. You have several policies tonight for a first reading. It does not require any action, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. I will say that between February and May, there will several updates. And so that is part of what you are reviewing with, with these policies.
Anybody have any questions?
So all those are going to be ready for second review in the next meeting.
I am very thankful for Robin Kazee, who has been helping me with this transition. And so, yes, um, they will, um, and it was a, a quick turnaround, but I am thankful for her help, um, as well as help from all of senior staff. So senior staff has all contributed to reviewing these so that we would be ready for a first reading tonight.
Okay. You want to go ahead and go to the second one?
Sure. Um, the second reading, um, this one does require action. It is J E C A. It's the admission of homeless children and the revision of the definition of homeless to comply with the McKenney-Vento Act. Um, and so unless you have any other questions, I would ask for your approval, um, for this reading.
Anybody have any questions before we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, second by Mr. Phillips, that we approve the, um, proposed policy provisions. Anybody got any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Personnel report, Ms. Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, prior to asking for approval of the personnel report, I'd like to give you an overview of the highlights of the last two weeks, leading up to the big day tomorrow, as Dr. Ranella said. The week before last, we had our new teachers return to us for our Cruising to Success Week. Um, as Dr. Hale has said before, we work on that for about six months prior to that week for new teachers, um, coming in to plan for the activities that week, the PD, trying to make it fun and engaging. Um, we try to make improvements every year. This year we got smart and enlisted the help of some committees of teachers and staff members that wanted to help. People in our building and central office also signed up to help for that week. And I think that we did a tremendous job, um, making some improvements this year. One of the biggest things was that we, um, had a committee that got some donations together for us. We had food, uh, prize, so, so, um, donations and monetary donations as well. So we were able to feed our new teachers breakfast and lunch throughout the week. Um, so that was really exciting. They, um, that was part of the feedback that we got. They appreciated the good food that we gave them. Tuesday and Wednesday of that week, we had them for half-days and then we sent them back to their building so that they would have time with their principals, set up their classrooms. We know that new teachers need time to decorate their walls and set up their classrooms. Thursday of that week, we had them all day. So we had quite the feast for lunch that day. We called it Taste of the Community, which was a great idea from the committee that worked on our food. We had different restaurants, um, in the different areas of our community, in the Timberlake area and Rustburg that donated food. So it was really neat. So we could advertise businesses and also, um, feed our new teachers really well. And then Friday of that week was our, um, normal Friday mentor lunch. So we had all of our administrators and all of the lead mentors and most of the mentors, not all of them can come, um, before they're under contract, but they came and had lunch with our new teachers. The feedback we got was, it was really positive and, um, engaging. We tried to balance the PD that we give them. It's a lot that week, but we try to balance it between the fun and the positivity and the food, um, and all the stuff that they're learning. So then last Monday, all of our teachers returned. Um, again, first couple of days were time in their building, time with their principals and administrators. They had two days to get ready for back-to-school day, which was Wednesday. I went around and I know a lot of senior staff went around and the vibe in all of the buildings was just positive, smiles and principals talking to families and students. And I, I went to mostly elementary schools that, I mean, they're so excited to get back in the elementary schools. And then Thursday was probably the most exciting day. We reinstituted our convocation day. We had Liz Huntley, who came and spoke to all of our staff. We went over to Highland Heights, um, and she gave us a wonderful message about the impact of education on her life. It, it was just really great. I know Dr. Stanley said that he received a lot of messages, as we did as well, about how much our teachers enjoyed her speech and just the positivity from that. Friday was supposed to be a long PD day. We had to pivot a little bit. That was okay because of the weather, even though it turned out to be a beautiful day. We made the decision the day before to have that as an at-home workday for our teachers, because we did have PD planned all day. Our instructional staff and our technology staff did an excellent job making sure that was up and running. And it was still a really great, positive day. It was just some PD that we had to get done. Today was our orientation day, and I was laughing to myself. It might be why none of our principals joined us today. Because, or tonight, the few that I spoke to said it went really well. But boy, do I remember how exhausting that is. But I think that overall, again, another positive day, ready for tomorrow, the big day. And again, just the feeling this year is really positive, and I think our teachers are excited, our principals are excited. So I'm excited to see what the year has in store. All of that to say, our personnel report looks really good. We are almost fully staffed. So I figured the question about the bus drivers coming up from last month. We always lose a few staff members leading up to right before school starts. People just find new positions and new jobs, so they give us their two weeks' notice right before the school year's starting. So we're still working on filling a couple of classified positions. But three of the positions, the teaching positions that I had mentioned that we were going to wait and fill second semester, principals were going to absorb them in their schedules. We actually got some last-minute applicants and are working to fill those. They're not on tonight's personnel report, but I hope to have those filled possibly by the end of this week. So we'll be in really good shape. So I can answer any questions that you may have, or otherwise, I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as written.
Any questions?
I don't have a question for convocation. We had heard her.
Yes. She was amazing.
Actually, I loaned my book out to a teacher.
I did...
They were thrilled with her story.
Yep, I lent my book out after Thursday as well to someone that wanted to read it. She really was, it was just, I mean, entertaining a little bit, but also just the message. I mean, her background and the story about teachers that impacted... There you go, Dr. Stanley. The teachers that impacted. And that was our theme, that's been our theme with our administrative conference, is the impact that our teachers have. They know it, but sometimes I think they forget it when things get a little tough. So it was nice for her to remind them.
One of her teachers came when she, her child was born.
Yeah. Yes, and watch, yes, when her baby, when she said when she was in the hospital. It's pretty neat. Any other questions?
I don't remember too much about what people say, but I remember she said something to the fact that you never know that you might be the only person that really loves a kid or helps a kid, that you just don't know and just don't lose that opportunity to be that person and fill that role if it comes in. And I mean, that's not just in school, but everywhere.
That's right. We often say, we don't know what's going on in other people's lives. So when small kiddos come into your door, no matter what's going on with the teacher or with them, that teacher can make a huge impact on that child's day. They even talked about the bus drivers. I mean, obviously, we've said that before. First time a kiddo gets on the bus, that driver's reaction to them and greeting to them could be what makes or breaks their day. So that was good to hear, too.
And we had a lot of drivers there. Yeah, it was open to everybody.
It's great. Good plan. Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the personnel report.
Motion.
Mr. Phillips gave the motion, Ms. Vaughn.
It was Mr. Maddox.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Ms. Vaughn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much. You didn't say anything there? Sorry. All right. Dr. Stanley, you got a bunch of stuff for us?
Well, not really. Amy did a very nice job of summing up the last two weeks. He did a great job, and the last two weeks have been fast and furious. And I want to thank our staff for pouring into our teachers. And starting tomorrow, our teachers will start pouring into our students. So it has been a great weekend. Convocation was a great event. It was so nice to see all of our teachers there. They had their T-shirts on, they're setting their sections. They show us so much pride in their schools, and it really was a great event. And so was our open house, Back to School Day. And I know today's orientation session was very beneficial to those kids as they make their transitions to new schools. And we just look forward to tomorrow. So again, I want to thank everybody for their hard work, and I appreciate it very much. I do want to give you an update on the J R O T C application that we told you we were going to file. I hate to tell you that it has been waitlisted, and we should hear back something in the spring as to the potential of that happening. But we did file the application, and we are eager to see something happen there. And then I also want to inform you that at our next board meeting, we'll have a company called Woolbrook. They're going to be doing a presentation to you, and they're going to talk about our school capacities, what they look like in terms of enrollment, and how the housing developments that are going to impact that help inform our decisions moving forward. So that's all going to be next month. That's all I got?
That's it?
That's it.
At the start of school, that's all you got?
Next month, I'm sure we'll have more.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, you ready to go first?
Sure, I was just going to say it's not on the agenda, so we can make a motion to adjourn unless you want to hear from everybody.
I need to hear from you.
No, well, everybody did a great job, but I was just going to say thanks to everything I've been to. I mean, I went to the new teachers. Of course, reunification was incredible. The new teachers went to that on the Friday morning. I couldn't stay for the mentor lunch, because there was actually an event happening at Spark in Alta Vista that I had never been to. Three students from Alta Vista were there showing off their businesses that they started. So I went in and saw those folks. Two young ladies have started like the sparkle jewelry business, you know, with the... I don't even know what this stuff, 3D printer kind of fun stuff. And then a young guy with his landscaping business. It was just really super cool. But the new teachers, oh my gosh. So I went in, I was in the library, I guess it was secondary, and they were kind of potted up a little bit. So I just kind of popped around and sat at the tables and just asked where they came from. And again, and I would love, Ms. Huntley, I know it'd probably be tough to get hard numbers on this, but how many people were graduates, new teachers, that were graduates of Campbell County schools? Or grew up here, or both? I mean, I would say it was over 60% of the people I spoke to, but I, you know, didn't have a big... You know, I didn't get to everyone in the room, but it was unbelievable. Or children of teachers who are now coming to be teachers. It was great, and they were all so excited. Like you said, I mean, everyone was smiling. They were so thankful, they felt... And then open houses, too. So I talked to as many new teachers as I could at the open houses, at the Brookville schools, and everyone just said they, everyone just made them feel so at home. So again, just more and more proud every day to be Campbell County schools. And they worked really hard this summer.
Ms. Parker, I can give you that information. We've tracked how many Campbell County grads.
Oh, cool. Cool, thanks, Amy.
Yeah, and on your personnel report, if you could, we used to do this. If you could put a little asterisk or something like that, you know, if they were Campbell County school graduates, that's gratifying. It's gratifying to see that.
Yeah.
So I don't have a lot, but Mr. Harrison shared that their open house night was a real success, and everybody was really excited. But what is exciting is the elementary school in William Campbell have collaborated to organize a special elementary school night at the upcoming home football game. And so all the Brookville Elementary students will receive free admission, and they can run through the tunnel, leaving out the players. I thought that is just great, you know, to get those two schools tied together. And so this is some fun, new blood, new leadership, and so I think that's really good. And it said this is the first joint big community event between the two schools since the pandemic. And so they're excited. And then at William Campbell, this is really good. They had a great turnout for Back to School Night. I think they've, the last couple of years, they've sort of pushing a PTO, but they had 25 new parents sign up for the PTO, and they had two members last year. So, yeah, and then they also had 13 new parents sign up to join the boosters club. And also very excited that they're fully staffed, including a French teacher that they were short on, so... Yeah, so, because when I met with him a couple of weeks ago, you know, we talked about that, and he said he's in good shape, he just needs a French teacher. And then voila. And I think that's all I got. So I'm excited about this upcoming school year. It sounds like we've got all our ducks in a row and a lot of positivity out there. I'm excited, yeah.
Can I share with you, at the end of convocation, what faculty do you think was out there with Ms. Huntley taking all the selfies and even have now been given the opportunity to do a book study with her, Brookville Elementary School? All the teachers, all the administrators, past and present, taking pictures with the...
That's awesome.
Oh, good, good. Good.
Ms. Tanner?
Well, just, you know, I certainly enjoyed that reunification that we went through, and I was able to enjoy the mentor lunch that we had. And so it was fun to pop around tables and meet new teachers and kind of see where they were from. And I was surprised at how many of my friends' kids were coming back in. And that's kind of what I noticed more, was a lot of us that, you know, were teachers and alumni that have returned. And so it would be kind of nice to see that, those numbers as they roll through. Open houses, I popped around for full schools. I was quite impressed that Mr. Slater had on a tux for the entire day. Fully downed out for Lee's Roads Hollywood. They went completely all out. And there's popping on social media is a video that they had done interviewing all the teachers on what they love best about Lee's Road. And that was kind of a neat thing to kind of see that come about. I stopped by Brookville High School today, actually, because I was just curious how things went with construction and logistics and navigating with everybody. And I was really impressed to see our seniors, the class of 25, were there, because the parking lot tradition of doing their wall is not available, because that is construction zone. And so they had worked out where panels were made, and they've got a makeshift wall that's going up, and the kids were all, got all got together and filled that cafeteria, making their own little license plates with kind of a license plate driving theme. They had, a parent had made all the license plate boards. The kids were painting their license plates all together. And knowing that this is the class that's probably going to have the biggest, you know, unique senior year with having to deal with construction and shifting, and they were abuzz and so excited to be back in the doors and working on their senior wall. That's become a tradition for so many years. And Mr. Goody's ice cream was provided, and, you know, they had a big ice cream social. And it was just really neat to hear how excited the kids were. And, you know, just our administration is making it work and trying to keep as many traditions as they can, even if it has to look a little bit different. So...
Ms. Maddox?
Oh, Skip. I'll be quick. I attended both open houses. I was amazed at the elementary school, they had a smoking volcano. And the kids, everybody seemed to be looking forward to coming back to school. And I just thought, well, thank everybody for putting all that together. That's it.
Phillips?
Yeah, I got some feedback on the open houses and the, what is it, sixth grader orientation day and freshman orientation day and all that stuff went well, so that was good to hear. Thank you, Dr. Rennella, for your presentation on the, not only the event, the Love You Guys event, but also security in general. And kind of to follow, Dr. Miller, I wouldn't mind if we could kind of get an update. I guess either you or Dr. Stanley, just security in the schools. And I'm assuming we probably have a plan of how we want to continue to build that going forward, with which grants we're applying for. I kind of consider Campbell County, we've kind of been on the leading edge of security in schools, getting resource officers in every school in the county and a lot of other activities like that. So sometime down the road, later this fall or winter or what have you, just get an update or first to next year on where we're at and what's next, and kind of staying on the leading edge of security in our schools. Thanks to the sheriff's office, I think it's integral for you guys to be a part of Campbell County schools, and thanks for all you do with your involvement, not only in the schools, but with these extracurricular events like we had and your involvement there. So I think it's a good effort and keep it up and keep us posted, so.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Ms. Vaughn?
I was able to attend the new teacher lunch, and it was great to see bright new faces and some old faces and catch up with people. And your messaging was fantastic and uplifting. And I also was able to stop by convocation and hear the last end of Liz Huntley's speech, but also I got to hear Dr. Stanley's words of encouragement. And I wanted to say that I also have a feeling that this is going to be the best year yet. Brookville Girls Volleyball Teams will host Lord Bodatah in a scrimmage game Wednesday night. And then the Bees Football Teams will have a scrimmage home Friday night. And tomorrow is the first day of school. So excited to see everyone come back to school and excited to see the opportunities that this year holds.
Well, I'm happy to see schools get back in session and get the kids back in school and a learning environment. Appreciate all the work that everybody's done to make it possible and for everybody to be optimistic and full of energy. I mean, I think it takes our leaders, you know, pulling it off. And appreciate y'all's efforts and all of your team's efforts. One thing that I want to share, and I, Dr. Hale, Mr. Hardy, y'all going to give a presentation on the Business Alliance thing sometime down the road? Or, because I'll screw it up if I do it, but...
We'll plan to share our plan once we finalize that. And just, I think mid-September is when it'll be completed.
Well, just...
But you're welcome to say a few words.
Well, I volunteered to spend two days not knowing what the heck I was going to do. But for somebody that was out of place like an old shoe that don't fit, it was two of the most, I guess, enlightening days I've had since I've been involved with the school system. This was done by the Lynchburg Business Alliance, and they brought in administrators, counselors, principal, just from all of the, our county, Lynchburg, Amherst, Bedford, Athletics. And we have an opportunity to produce technically-based students that can fill a huge need in the Lynchburg area. And I mean, it's not rocket science, and it's great money. And it's, a lot of it is common sense. I mean, we, how many people do you think were there? Seventy, seventy people? And divided up into three groups and went to Southern Air, Framatone, Delta Star, BWXT. Let me see. Arfian, Centra, is that it? And of course, Sunny Merriman. I think Sunny Merriman was a big winner in this whole thing, because they got to carry us around on their buses, you know, the new electric buses. So they had the entire group locked in buses, and they could tell us all of the benefits of electric buses, and you couldn't get out, and you couldn't, you know, but they're really nice. You learn a lot about buses. But these companies are looking for candidates that want to work and grow their business. And I mean, they're willing to pay a lot of money. I mean, what I heard at BWXT and Delta Star, if you can weld, by golly, you are the person they want. I mean, this, it's unbelievable. Machinists, welders. Here's, I'm just going to read you some of their desired skills. There's a new soft skill. I had no idea what a soft skill was until I looked it up after the first day. But I mean, it's common sense. Soft skills, life skills, hand tools, be able to read a tape measure. I mean, they're getting kids that don't, and this is not chemical, this is, you know, their workforce. Leadership, initiative, tenacity, time management, communication skills, dependability. Everybody says, you know, kid, they won't come. They'll come to work one day and they won't show up the next, too. I mean, it's crazy. Dependable, reliable, willing to learn. Just accountability, adaptability, communication skills. It's not rocket science, and we can produce these and have a cooperative, you know, impact on our community. I mean, these are great jobs. I mean, it's, I never really, I knew what they did at Delta Star, but I had no idea of the opportunities there. I mean, it was, I was blown away. And I guess we toured this Delta Star, which makes Transformers. And I mean, it's, everything's massive, and it's like, what are they doing? And you look around, and you look around, and they take us on a tour, and they say each one of these big Transformers, you see on this tractor trailer, $3 million. And they got work four years out. It takes like four years to produce one of these Transformers from the time they get to order. And when we, and two gentlemen led us through there and said, when you get done, we're going to go up to the cafeteria and eat a sandwich, and our plant manager's going to, you know, talk to us. And I guess I'm sexist or whatever, but I mean, there was a couple of people in the room, and there was this blond-haired girl, I guess she was 30 years old. She started talking to us, she's the plant manager. And I mean, but just sharp as a tack, bright and brilliant. And they just want, they just want us to help them find candidates that can help them grow and develop their, you know, maintain their business. And I mean, for the salaries that David can swear to the BWXT and Delta Star, I mean, it's not, it's not jump change. I mean, it's low and behold good money. And then on top of that, we toured CVCC. And Mr. Hardy, you can probably help me more there, but their career technical facilities were extraordinary. What they're able to do there, which I told Clay, we can easily do a lot of that here. You know, we just have to focus on that a little bit. I mean, it's a huge opportunity. I mean, it's, and for us to say we need to neglect it and not do anything about it, I don't think we're supporting our community. But I'm just saying it's, like I say, I could screw it totally up, but I hope you all will give us a presentation about it down the road, about how critical or how more important career VOTech is now than it was 10 years ago. I mean, like I said, I just remember when I was in school, if you did shop, you could do, you could do pretty much anything. You could do carpentry work, you could weld, you could grind, you could drill. That's what they're looking for now. I mean, it's, and these were companies, and then I was talking to somebody else about it... it, we didn't even discuss that people go out and go in business for themselves, the opportunities for people to go in business for themselves. So I just would like you all to present something to us and say we need to maybe focus on our career technical, you know, Mr. Hardy, I'm blowing you up here now. I'm giving you the opportunity to pursue us for more because I think it's, I think it's the trend we need to be, that's the trend we need to be putting, you know, a little more impact on, so.
Well, one thing I share, too, with your support of the CTE Academy for seniors, we are supporting our local area big time because we are the main three industries in our area, our manufacturing, healthcare, and education. You know, and education, we can continue to expand. So we appreciate your support of the CTE Academy for seniors. We have 115. You know, again, that number's high, and how can we possibly expand that and the support of the foundation? We could not do that without the support of the Campbell County Education Foundation.
And that's out of 180. I think they said it was 180 kids in their dual enrollment program. We've got 115.
But we always have opportunities to expand, so we're, we have lots of ideas.
Well, that's great.
So how do we build those soft skills?
In the curriculum? Yeah, it needs to just be explicitly taught because, and the more interaction that we have, the better. But one worker actually shared, and this is key, so again, kudos to the work we're doing. He said the number one thing we can do to help a student be ready, or job, this was Framanton, be able to read and comprehend the law. So literacy is the foundation of our work, and then we add on from there.
I wrote down soft skills for, for those that are here. If I asked a question and anybody not know what a soft skill is, I would raise my hand because I know what it was, I thought. But it's communication, leadership, being able to work as a team. We have, I remember the guys at Delta Star, he said, people get in and they won't cooperate, they won't work together. I mean, they're just like butt heads. Teamwork, be able to be creative, manage your time, be adaptable, solve problems, have a good work ethic, critical thinking, and be nice. I mean, it's simple stuff.
It, well, as a former small business owner and employer, I know it, I can teach them what I need to teach them, but the soft skills, that's a, it's a work in progress, and it starts at kindergarten, you know. But that's critical for, that's, that's what makes an employee is those soft skills. So anything we can do to help children mature, take responsibility for themselves, be nice, work together, you know, and I know that's part of our five Cs, right, or whatever. So anything we can continue to build on helps the foundation. You know, you can be a great welder, but you're, if you're welding at Bank or Steel or welding at Delta Star, or, you know, the welding is different at every place. They're going to teach them how to do that, but you can't teach them to get to work on time, you know?
That's exactly right.
And that's what you need. They need to get to work on time.
I mean, even this, even the guy talking to us at BWXT, which I always thought, if you got on a BWXT, you were set. You were, you know, in a high cotton robe. But he said, people come to work and skip two days and maybe come back, maybe not. And I mean, that's, I don't know, but that's just.
They don't have a mama.
I don't know, but I, it was, I enjoyed the two days. I'm kind of like the teachers, they fed us breakfast and lunch, so anytime that happens, it ain't all bad.
Now the truth comes out.
But it, but it was, it was, it was really nice two days, and I certainly, I appreciate you asking me, inviting me, but it was, it really eye-opening. And I would have probably had a different view if I'd gone to Centra. And certainly, I mean, I just, I didn't, I mean, when BWXT and Delta Star say the same things about, you know, what they're looking for and what they can't find, I mean, you would think of all the high school graduates we see going across our stages, like 100% could fit those bills, but, but maybe not. I don't know. So I just appreciate you all asking me to go, and I certainly enjoyed it. And Mr. Hardy, I'll do everything I can to support you and Ms. Wilson, you know, getting y'all shit bigger or whatever we need to do. And that's, I think that's all I got. Anybody got it? What did you hold your book up for?
I said, this is all incorporate soft skills, our middle school curriculum.
Oh, really?
While teaching you not to do it.
Well, maybe, maybe.
It wraps it all together.
Mr. Wilson, during your talk, I remember the security guard at BWXT, he was telling us the opportunities there, you know, security guard, and he said, you know, what you need to keep in mind is when you're in high school and you just had high school, any stupid things you do that show up on your record, talking about getting a government security clearance, you can winglay that for like two years, just any stupid, you know, drug infraction or speeding or anything like that, you'd never think about it, and you probably can't tell a 16, 17, 18-year-old kid that, but. That security guard, he made it clear, he said, NSW shows up on your record, getting a security clearance just takes a, you know, dramatic turn, so. I'm sorry I preached too long, but been a good meeting. Anybody got anything else to add? What we can do better? Thank you for getting that speaker. That was a great move. That was.
What's Brookville doing for lights Friday night?
They're going to have temporary lighting that we ought to be able to see now for scrimmage, which is coming up next Friday. So I think the concern might be how loud is that? I think they'll put off some noise.
The generators.
The generators, yeah. Sunbelt, I think, was the name. We're down for the fair. They're not remembers.
All right. Anybody got anything else? Entertainer motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Mr. Phillips. All those favor indicate by standing up.
It was Vaughn.
I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry.
I'll take it from her. Either way. It's all good.
Name's super.